So I'm calling to order the Monday, December 4th, 2017 work session of the Anchorage School Board. All board members are present with the exception of Betty Davis. And we will begin today's meeting with a discussion on the Winterberry Charter Renewal. Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to invite Darrell Vincicup, and he will introduce this topic, and he has a great group of folks from Winterberry here to share as well.
Great, thanks. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, thanks for this opportunity. President Auguste Giesler, members of the Board, Superintendent Bishop, thanks for the opportunity to come forward to you and talk a little bit about the Charter, the Winterberry Charter Renewal. What we'd like to do today in the time allotted to us is, I'm going to speak briefly about the Charter Renewal process, and then Principal Anderson and his team will give you some highlights about Winterberry, talk about the Winterberry Renewal, Charter Renewal, and then allow for about 10 minutes of questions and answers from the Board. That, so in the great state of Alaska, the local school districts are the authorizers. They authorize or approve charter schools. A lot of times in Law 48, they're, they're public entities spending, or, I'm sorry, private entities spending public money. But in Alaska, it is the local school districts who authorize and approve the charters. Most of our charters are for 10 years. They're authorized for 10 years, although our newest charter school stream, because it was new, we authorized it for a three-year charter, and they will be actually up for renewal next year, them and Eagle Academy. So, if a charter school decides they want to renew their charter, they must get, the Academic Policy Committee, the APC, which is the governing board, must submit to the superintendent by September 1st their renewal application. I would like to just quickly point out, we are exclusively using the state application this year, where in the past, we've used the Board, the Board application that's in Board Policy and the state, and there really wasn't a very good alignment with that. So, we really wanted to have a clean copy that goes to Juneau, that you have looked at comprehensively and have approved. So, the renewal application comes forward to the superintendent. The ASD through me, in my position, does a comprehensive administrative review process, and I will say it is comprehensive. We, I try to pull in practically every department in the Anchorage School District that can put their eyes on it. We run it through Google Docs, where everybody has an opportunity within our administrative offices to look at the document, make suggestions, make notations, note questions. And then on October 23rd, we met with the Winterberry Review Team and our Academic Policy Committee. I would like to note, I wasn't attending that meeting. I had a family emergency and had to head to Connecticut, so I really want to thank Chief Graham for facilitating that meeting. I've heard from both Winterberry and district administration, it was a great meeting with a lot of collegiality, a lot of feedback, a lot of good questions and offers of support going back and forth. So, so, at that point, Winterberry then, their, their policy committee can then take the suggestions or not take the suggestions, create a clean document application, and then we go to Board Review, which is what we're in right now. It will go through this work session. I believe it's scheduled tonight for a, as a non-action item for further discussion, and then it is scheduled for next board meeting, the 18th floor, as an action item. So, it's there for, now's your opportunity to ask your questions, read through the charter application. If our school board approves the application, then it's my job to work with Winterberry to get it down to Juneau, no later than 30 days after the school board's decision, and no earlier than 90 days prior to their next meeting. So, we'll get it to, we'll get it down to Juneau. Juneau will then do the same things that we're doing here. They'll vet it. We'll have a session with the, with the Deed Board to whether that will approve it or not. Assuming that Deed approves it, we then, the Anchorage School District enters into a contract with the Winterberry APC. The contract, the draft of the contract is, is in the application for your review. We have changed a few things more structural. We added some numbers and numbered, numbered items and studs, such. So, at that point, assuming the Anchorage School Board approves the Charter and Deed approves the Charter, we then enter into the contract. So, as I said earlier, the maximum a school district can enter into a charter contract is 10 years. So, with that, I'd like to ask Principal Anderson to come up, and what Principal Anderson and his team is going to do is talk to you a little bit about Winterberry, what the review are, what the renewal application process was, and a little bit about Winterberry.
And you may add chairs if folks need to speak at the same time or within proximity of each other if you'd like. We could just pull these blue chairs up if you'd like.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving us this chance to speak. My name's Eric Anderson. I have, this is my first year with ASD as a principal, and I am very excited to be part of the Winterberry community. I just want to say that coming on to Winterberry this year, I am very impressed with the commitment by the parents with this charter school and the staff as far as their commitment to professional development and continuing to improve Winterberry as a school is very impressive. I am, since I am brand new this year, I am still learning the ropes. So, I am, I brought my smartest people with me, and I'd like to introduce them real quickly. To my right here is Alicia Bash Barber. She is our pedagogical coach in our school, and she is our expert in the pedagogy here at Winterberry. Behind me here is Claire Leclair. She is our past chair at this point. And over here is Megan Judge, who is our Chair of the Winterberry Charter Council. And behind me over there is Julie Pepe Phelps. She is our hybrid program teacher, who could speak to that. So, what I'm going to do here is turn it over to Alicia Bash Barber to speak about some of the highlights of our school, so we can go ahead and turn it over to Alicia. Thank you, Alicia.
I'm used to sitting here. So, yeah, what does, what sets us apart from other schools? We, I guess I would say our main lesson are in how we structure our core curriculum. Our main lesson consists of instruction of, from the humanities through science, through history, and it's a two-hour block, and that's with our core teacher. And I'll go into the specifics of that in a moment here. And then we have specialty classes, and that includes Spanish, movement, handwork, and music. So, our main lesson is a two-hour block, and we, it may be a language arts block, or a science block, or a math block. And, for example, we'll have second grade block in place value, or eighth grade block in geometry. And how we present and teach these core subjects would be by delivering the concepts through an oral story. So, for example, if we're learning geometry, it wouldn't just be memorized as proof. It would be learning about Euclid and the history, the time period, and who was this man. Then we would take our students through the entire, his entire book of the elements and constructing all of the constructions. And so, it is a very hands-on, in-depth study of Euclid, of the history and math. And then, let's see, what else would I say? In the main lesson, we also began by movement. So, in learning the multiplication tables in first grade or even in second grade, third grade, the earlier grades of strengthening the solid foundation of multiplication, students would learn verses in math and skip counting, and they would move their bodies to fully understand multiplication concepts. Then, there would also be poetry that would be embedded within that main lesson. So, we would take poems of the Euclidean time or math poems to correspond with the block that they're learning, language arts or math. And we would also incorporate speech exercises within the main lesson as well. So, they have this big, robust beginning to their academic learning process. And then it would be coming back to their desk. There would be a presentation by the teacher, which would be a story. And the next day, the story would be recalled. So, even if we are teaching math, they are still learning language arts in conjunction, which is the beautiful aspect of Waldorf education, that when you tug on one thing, everything is connected, instead of here is math, here is language arts. Let's see here, we, after, let's see, we, my slides are going here. I'm not really pertaining to my slides. Each block is brought to the students first through eighth grade, both academically and developmentally appropriate. We have a set block scheduled through the grades, and everything is, all of our subjects are aligned to the Alaska Common Core standards as well. So, that's something that I really wanted to pertain, emphasize. And I think that's...
That's about it?
Oh, the final thing, one, for the main lesson, is that students create a portfolio of everything that they have learned. So, here's some slides and examples of some lesson books and geometry. So, what they learn is, at the end of the year, they go home with their portfolio of everything that they learned, which is really magnificent. And I brought examples, if anyone wants to look at it, because it's nicer to see it in a book.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. All right. We do have our, our board members here who worked extensively on the changes of the charter and, and refined it and revised it. We'd like to also say thank you once again to the, the review team, the ASD review team for giving us so many great suggestions at this point in time, because that was very helpful for us to make our charter more readable and more understandable and more efficient in a lot of ways. If there's, we are open to any questions at this time.
I do, I'll let you go first. Mr. Donlin.
Okay. I'm learning about how charter schools work more and more. On page 11 of the application, it identifies that the student, number of students served pupil-to-teacher ratio is currently 15 to 1. And then on page 55 of Appendix B of the charter school contract, it identifies that the charter school shall maintain the following pupil-to-teacher ratio, 25 to 1. And I'm just wondering how those two interact.
If I speak?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so to speak to that, we, 25 to 1 is what we go with. And the 15 to 1, I believe that that is a correction that needs to be made in this charter. We have talked about this already. So, that is a correction that needs to be made. So, we're going with 25 to 1.
Okay, that was my question.
And if I may, the contract is really what drives the charter. When people talk about the charter, it really comes back to the contract.
Okay, I have a question. It's concerned on page 32, 33 of your report. And I note that your pedagogical expert just referred to the fact that you're meeting, or you follow Alaska State Common Core. When I look at the PEAKS testing results, I see some really good English Language Arts scores, far higher than the rest of the ASD or the rest of the state. But when I looked at the mathematics, I was rather concerned that it was substantially lower than ours, which I think is too low as it is, and even lower than the rest of the state. So, and yet, understanding the Waldorf approach in terms of the blocks and integration of all the curricula, how, what is the plan to address that? You're not using the exact same curriculum that the rest of the district's using in math? So, I'm wondering, what's your plan?
That's a great question. And that is something that was brought to me as I came on board, and I looked at the, and we looked at those scores, and the teachers were well aware of this, this issue before I even got there. And we are, are we looking at bringing in some professional development for this next year and to look at our math score and how we approach math and how we can boost that, those scores as we go on forward, because that is a recognized deficit right now.
I just wanted to, we currently have five teachers right now who are in a graduate program for Waldorf education. And so, not all of our, very few of our teachers are fully Waldorf trained. And so, and although really great teachers, they are bringing this all together. And so, by that, we hope scores will improve.
Dr. Bishop?
And Madam President, I would just like to, I know it's just syntax, but as a district, I would like to say we're really not interested in scores improving. We're really interested in students' learning. And so, I just want to ensure that folks understand that there is a significant difference. So, just student improvement is what we're looking for. So, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Holden?
And actually pertinent to that, by any chance have you looked at how your students from 2009, 2010 are doing now? Is there any, I'm kind of a big believer that, that a lot of times, scores in the near term aren't necessarily fully reflective, especially when you're doing something that's divergent from the convention. And, and the real question to me is, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the road, how are those students fitting in when they leave Winterberry and they're, they're in other programs?
One of the things that I had, my first year in this position, which was three years ago, I asked Dr. Sun at the time to, if he could track the cadre of Winterberry grads and to tell me how are they doing, because I was looking at test scores as well. And although the, although the ends were pretty small, they were small groups, overall, the test scores were either above ASDs or right aligned with, there was one small cadre with some math scores that were at deficit. One of the other things that Winterberry does is they loop their teachers from first grade to eighth grade. And so, I think that's one of the other things I know from talking to Principal Anderson and the staff, is it's one of the things that they're looking at is if, because if you do get a teacher where there is some deficit, then that's going to build through the year. So, Alicia, did you want to add anything?
Well, I do have students who are knocking on my door whenever they're in town, and they're near graduating right now from college. And there's a handful in Ivy League schools who went on scholarship when they graduated from Winterberry. My, the core of my class, I would say eight students went into the IB program in honors program, or the classes, IB classes. So, and then we have another teacher who has looped. His, this is on his second rotation, and I feel those, those students are very solid.
Okay, I want to change gears entirely. Is this the appropriate type to talk about finance piece also? Yes. I saw that you're, you have a lease that goes, I believe, if I read correctly, till 2028 with the, with the builder of your, the owner of your building. Is it in the intent of your APC to move into a lease-by arrangement with that owner?
Dennis, I'm going to let Julie Pepe Phelps speak to that.
Although that was the original hope, when...
Could you restate your name for the record, please?
Oh, excuse me. Julie Pepe, P-E-P-E, Phelps, P-A-G-L-P-S.
Thank you very much.
Although that was the original hope, when we had the building, you know, interacted with the building owner and built the building, at this point in time, just from, we're using our funds primarily and mostly for, for the, for students and for, you know, rising costs of teachers. But, one thing that we have been doing is keeping back some to be able to do what we need to do to expand slightly for our, to accommodate the, for more classrooms for our specialty teachers who have not ever had, in the 13 years that we've been a school, a classroom. So, we are going to hopefully make that happen in the summer, and so...
So, you're financing that?
We, through our budget and through the allowances that we are, you know, through how we are allowed to do that, keeping small amounts, and have been doing that for the last six years.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Punt.
So, where are you going to put that on the site? Are you going to go west, or are you going to go south? Because to me, those are the only two places you could go.
We are going to go west. North, south, yes.
Towards the woods.
West, away from the mountains. Yeah, we're going to go west and already have, you know, scope and all those things, so.
If I may, also, one of the things with the charter schools is they all work very closely, and we all work very closely with all the various departments in the Anchorage School District. Mr. Chief Roth has a monthly meeting with myself where we talk specifically about charter school concerns, issues, or whatever we need. So, Dave Whiting and his department vets all leases very closely and keeps a, keeps an eagle eye on them.
Dr. Bishop?
Yep, Madam President, I just want to put in a good word. There was this excellent work on this renewal, and they work closely to answer a lot of the questions internally. It is, I visited the building a couple times. It's a fabulous place. Parents and kids are happy to learn, and we'll continue to take a look at our true success in education is really, are our kids happy and successful when they leave us? And we'll continue to look at that. And we're just very pleased to have worked with this school and offer our kids and parents and ASD a choice for the children that they believe in. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And for the record, Kaylee Spencer has joined us. Dr. Bishop, family engagement work is the next thing on the agenda. Thank you, Madam President. And I would like to call our Chief...
And I would like to call our chief academic officer, Mike Graham, up here to assist me in this presentation. Actually, I turned it over to him and he has his team assisting him. Thank you. And this is in response to Member Donnelly, just inquired about the different types of family engagement and where we are in ASD.
Indeed. Thank you. I'm Mike Graham. For those who don't know me, the chief academic officer. And joining me here, we have our senior director for professional learning, Jenny Knudsen, and our director of Title I, Karen Halpin. So, honored to have a chance to be able to talk about family engagement here a little bit. I'm particularly excited because as a team, in October, we had a chance to go to a, to an event with a number of other districts and learn a lot more. I learned a whole lot more about family involvement and what was going on, about family engagement, I should say, and what was going on in places. So, to have an opportunity, the timing is pretty cool that we were, we were asked to, can we, can we come present on this a little bit? When it comes to, to family engagement, if we were to ask all of you, you know, hey, what, what does that mean to you? What is parent involvement? What is, what is family engagement? We'd probably get a lot of different answers, partly from our own experiences, both as, whether it was educator or as a parent, or the things we remember was going on when we were even students. We want to make sure, though, that we have a common definition. So, and that that language and understanding is the same. So, what we have here is, as you can see, family-teacher collaboration that drives student learning and achievement. So, that's the basis really of what family engagement is about. Everything we do, everything we do with our families should be driving student learning and achievement. It's a two-way, it's a two-way street, meaningful communication, building trusting relationships, and of course, the academic partnering that goes on with that. To put this in context a little bit with the Ford's Own initiatives, your Destination 2020 initiative of the ninety percent of the parents will recommend their child's school to others, certainly, family engagement directly addresses this. Currently, we have, as you can see, over eighty-five percent of ASD parents and guardians would recommend their child's school to others. This is up by about four percent from the previous year. And I, and I hope that has something to do with some of the kinds of things that are going on, you can hear about here, but we'll see. We know there's still room to grow. That needs to continue. Family engagement, though, I want to put, point out that while it has that direct thing on the, on the ninety percent, the recommendation, it also definitely has an increase on, or impacts academic performance goal, attendance goal, and graduation goal. So, all of those, the more we have our, our families engaged with what's going on and partnering with us, we believe it has an impact on all of them. Discuss a little bit about why that is and the research behind it. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Knudsen.
So, why is it so important for us as a school district to focus on family engagement? Well, if you look at this slide right here, it's really about a matter of time. Most of us are surprised when we look at this because as educators, we have kids five days a week, all day long, so it feels like we have them quite a bit of time. But when you actually look at the data on how much time kids are with us, it's twelve percent of the school year. So, fifty-five percent of the time, other than when they're sleeping and at school, they're engaged with families and in the community. It's really important that we work in partnership to educate our children and to make sure they're achieving outcomes. So, this is, this is part of the why. When we look at the research on family engagement, too, there have been some meta-analyses done. And so, this one here, you'll see a link, so you can go on and you can look at it a little bit further yourself if you want. But New Wave in Evidence by Henderson and Mapp, this is really a research synthesis of key issues in the field of family engagement. So, they took fifty-one studies that were done and they looked at the impact of family engagement on student achievement, as well as specific strategies that have a higher impact on student achievement. So, looking at both those things. And so, when we look at the overall research and what does it say, basically, you know, if we are engaging families as partners, we're seeing better grades, more graduation, higher learning that's leading to college and technical schools, all of those types of things. Furthermore, we also want to look at not just what strategies are good, but what strategies work the best? Because there's a lot of practices that we can do that have an impact on student achievement, but what we want to do is look at what are those strategies that have the biggest impact? So, when you look at this chart, it gives you an idea of what are the effect sizes of the practices that have the biggest impact on student achievement when it comes to family engagement. And the thing I want to highlight with this is that it's specific practices that are tied to what kids are learning in their, the teaching and learning in classes that make the biggest impact, as opposed to showing up at events and stuff like that. That's great because we want to have that community feel, but tying it to specific strategies. So, I want to point out a couple on here. We aren't going to go through all of these. I would love to go through all these, but we'll, we'll hit just a couple of them. Keep in mind, point four oh is the tipping point. That's the, the point at which the effect size has value added, more effects than what we would expect to see typically in, in education. This is for research basis. So, what I want you to look at first is the first one up there, parent and teaching interventions. So, in this one, joint interventions that involve both the family and the school have one of the highest effect sizes, one point eight one. So, you think, remember that point four oh, we're talking huge value added. So, an example, what would this look like in a school? So, like in an elementary school, when we're working on reading fluency with kids, oftentimes teachers will teach parents how to do cold-hot reads, where they get a passage, they read it for a minute, they chart their score and how many words they read, then they get to read it a second time and increase their fluency and the pace at which they're reading, and they get to chart that. And so, that's an example of an intervention that was taught to the parents that is also being worked on in school. So, there's this reciprocal relationship. Another one that I want to address is homework, because that's a topic that comes up a lot. And if you look at the overall effect of homework and keep clicking on, on those, the effect of homework overall is a point two seven. So, it's not that having homework has no effect. It, it does have an effect. Point two seven, you know, has some, some effect in showing that it makes, has an impact on achievement. But when you look at best practices in homework, when you have parents involved in interacting with their child around homework, that goes up to a one point three eight. So, again, that comes back to teaching those practices and skills to parents that they can do at school, as opposed to when you look at just monitoring, parents as monitors of their, their child's homework, and that is a negative effect. So, just pointing these things out, there's some things that we can do, engaging families that are better than others. And that's what we're really trying to focus on, is how can we get better at doing those types of-
Before we go on the next slide?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Right above homework general effects, there's parent support for homework. So, that isn't the parents helping the child with the homework, that's parents supporting the concept of homework?
I'd have to look that one up. I, I don't remember that one in particular.
Okay. Because parents-
Yeah.
Working with the child and helping with homework is up at the top, the parent? And teaching intervention, then?
Yeah.
Or teaching-
Engaged together in the activity of doing, doing the homework activity.
Okay.
Yeah. But I can look up that support piece and get more information to you on that.
Them saying, I want you to do, you know, I support.
Please continue.
I'm going to turn it over to Karen now.
When I was going to school, it was considered parent involvement. And parent involvement was, it was the parent's responsibility to reach out to the school. We're in a paradigm shift now where family engagement, it's an instructional strategy, where it's the school's responsibility to reach out and work with those families and build capacity of the families to support the students' learning at home. In the past, it was also about the numbers, parent involvement was about the numbers of parents that came to an event at school. And now, what we're looking at doing is making those events meaningful, so that when the parents come into a family night, for an example, at one of our schools, that they leave with a better understanding of how to support their child's learning at home. Another shift is that in the past, when we were looking at parent involvement, it was more about the PTAs and parents coming in and volunteering at the school. Well, if you looked at my family, both of my parents worked full-time, so they didn't have the opportunity to go and volunteer at the school. That's not to say that they were not engaged. They had conversations with us every day about how we were doing in school, and they were really seen as a partner to support my learning and my siblings' learning. So, we're making a shift from parent involvement where it's parents seen as bake sales and fundraisers, to that they're partners in working with the school staff to support that learning. We have lots of great things going on across our schools in ASD. For example, for Northwood ABC, the staff is participating in home visits, where the staff will go and do personal visits with families. It can happen in the home, it can happen elsewhere. For example, one personal visit happened in a McDonald's. The parent has, was an incarcerated parent and said, yes, I want to get more engaged with my child's learning. So, the teacher felt comfortable going into a McDonald's and a couple of other teachers who were there having coffee just for that support. And the teacher left like, oh my gosh, here's a parent who really cares about supporting his child's learning. Another example that happened on those personal visits is a teacher went into a home and it was a challenging relationship with the parent, both from the principal's point of view down to the, the teacher's point of view. And through that home visit, the teacher realized, oh my gosh, this parent really does care about this child's learning and wants to work with me, the teacher partner, to support that learning. And a big aha was when the teacher met the family pet, which was a fish, and the child had named that fish after the teacher, after her. So, she left with this renewed, like, understanding, like, oh my gosh, this is really important to build these relationships and get to know our families. At Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, they are using something that's called academic parent-teacher teams. And they are doing this school-wide, that academic parent-teacher teams happen three times a year. Parents come into the classroom and there is a getting-to-know-you activity, because we want the families to get to know other families so that they're building those relationships. Next, the teacher shares data on where the students are at in their learning. After that, shares a standard on what they're learning in the school, followed by the teacher modeling explicitly an activity that the parent can do at home with the child. Then, the parent does the activity with another parent in the classroom. And then last, the parent sets a learning goal for the child. So, when the parent leaves, an APPT meeting, the parent fully understands what's going on in that classroom as far as instruction, student learning, and how the parent can support that.
And we have lots of other examples beyond Title I schools, where schools are really looking at family engagement in different ways. One example from one of our neighborhood schools at Scenic Park is learning lunches. What they found was that sometimes having evening events wasn't the best way to get parents in. And so, what they do is they have parents come in, some teachers have them come in, they either bring in lunch or they have the school lunch, and they do an activity, a learning activity with their child that's facilitated by the teacher, so that the parents can learn some of those strategies that are going to help their child in the curriculum that they're learning. Most classes, they report, get over ninety percent attendance when they do the learning lunches, which is a far increase from when they were doing the evening activities. Another example is one of our optional programs, Chugatch Optional, where they really look at parents as co-teachers. And one of the things is working in classrooms, you're going to see parents in the classroom working with their own child or with other groups of children, working with the teacher. I love going into that school and just going in, observing and seeing all the, the parents in there, especially at the beginning of the day, really helping support all kids. And then the other thing that they do is they do something called they teach, where they have mini-courses that parents will come in and do with kids of, things that they can do to enrich their learning. So, they'll do this a couple of times a year. So, that's another example of how they're engaging parents in the co-learning of, of students. Want to give you an example from one of our middle schools, Golden View Middle School, where they have community cafes. And this is a really, really nice example of how we get parent voice and community voice and what's happening in the schools. So, Golden View holds a community cafe and they talk about curricular activities and co-curricular activities, get input from parents to help shape that, and also can problem-solve issues that might be coming up at the school at that time. When you look at the research on this, a focus on respectful relationships among the staff and families is a really important thing for family engagement. And this is a really nice example of how to get that voice in as part of, part of family engagement. And then, the last one I want to give is an example is for high school, Eagle River High School and Chugiak High School did this last week, where they showed the film Screenagers and they invited parents to come in with their children and be able to watch the movie together, engage in a panel, engage in dialogue. And really, by having a common understanding of these opportunities and challenges that technology brings to us, and being able to work together with parents and students and, and the faculty really helps us address this issue. I can say, I have a, I have a high schooler that saw this and we've had really good conversations over the last week about the use of technology in education and outside of education. So, those are some of the examples that are happening around the district with family engagement.
And sometimes, it's notable that the timing is amazing, that when Chugiak did that just last week, they'd just been dealing at the school with some social media kinds of things that brought some concern. So, when the principal put out a message to, to the community, it was also to invite them to the screening. And Dr. Johnson was there and she, she reported that they had over two hundred show up for that. So, pretty, pretty impactful kind of thing going on. As we look at these things and all these, and we're making this shift, we continue to, to look at our data to see, hey, how can we improve? What can we do? We looked at the family climate survey from this last year. You know, you can see that we are, we are making some inroads, I think. Eighty-eight percent of parents who completed that survey agreed or strongly agreed that they are actively involved in their child's education. And slightly less, eighty-six percent of parents who, who completed that survey agreed or strongly agreed that the school's supportive and inviting place for parents and guardians. So, we're, we've got some work to do there. We would like to have everybody, of course, feel that they're welcome and going. But I think these kinds of things, we really get them engaged and see that there's, there's stuff happening is going to make a difference. But as we go through, we're also looking, one of the things that the survey also showed us is what are some of the barriers? What's keeping us from, why don't we have a hundred percent? And you can see their, their number, a couple of, a couple of the bigger ones, one is that lack of time and that, that significant challenge. But we, we do believe that by engaging families and practices, as these joint interventions, that can reinforce and support the core, the core instructions going on. Those are things people can do where they don't have to necessarily go in for an evening meeting or go in during the day to give an hour, those kinds of things they can even do at home, to address that barrier of having time to get in the schools and knowing how to contribute, as you've just heard. Another barrier, of course, being unaware of information. And this is, that, that communication vehicle is, is huge. This, this issue isn't being addressed in part, and I think you are aware, use of that updated Student Information System, Q. We're going, using that now to roll out information, grades, assignments, assessment results, communication to parents, those things there. The other one is the implementation of Blackboard, which is going to be able to, we're very excited, push information out to parents in multiple ways. They don't have to go click on something to get it. We'll be able to push it right to them. We're going to have a user-friendly website, and then that will also, what teacher wants to do, things will go to social media, automated calls, a lot of things like that. So, really trying to work to get that information out to folks. I guess in, in kind of drawing this, our part to a conclusion here, we're going to continue to shift this work with families from the old paradigm of parent involvement to meaningful partnerships that support student learning and achievement through family engagement. And that's, that's what we're about. Like I said, there's a lot of work that's going on. It is a change. Sometimes it goes really well, sometimes it steps back a little and goes forward, but we're pretty excited about the direction this is going. And open to questions.
Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you. It's really exciting to hear all those different examples of individual schools taking initiatives. Dr. Bishop, I had a memory that several months ago, you had mentioned a couple new nationwide programs for increasing parental involvement that were, would be district-wide. And I guess, and this is really great information, I'm glad to learn it. I was wondering, that's what my focus of my inquiry was really on, if, if any of those, those programs that you had mentioned to us, there were district-wide programs, if we were looking at any of those?
Through the President to Member Donnelly, I believe they were, Tam had actually, our President had attended a conference, not me.
Ah.
And so, they made it come from Tam.
Okay.
Tam, Augusta, Giesel.
Thank you for correcting my memory.
But to that point, we can certainly investigate and see where to go. Generally, we, just so we know, we'll put that in a goal, and so it's new work added rather than, you know, changing gears in the mid. But that would be exciting to have that for our planning, move it into the new year. Good idea.
I'd just love to know more about those programs and just learn about them. I'm not advocating for them at this point in time. I just want to learn more about them.
Perfect. Well, knowing the evidence here certainly warrants it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Marsette?
So I have a, just work, oh, there we go. I have a question. When you looked at homework back at that chart, and I think it was like .28 or something, with the students that we're reaching out to, I'm assuming a lot of these have parents that, single parents or both parents work, or, you know, it's hard to make that contact with them. How important was, I mean, I saw the graph, and I guess I kind of think that sometimes we give too much homework and there's not enough time at home for somebody to supervise it or to help with it or whatever. What kind of feedback did you get from the parents on that?
We didn't do the research study. This is based on a meta-analysis that was done related to the effect sizes in general across 51 studies of what has the best effect. So you could look at that and you'll see, like, supervision of homework, yeah, that's helpful, but it's not one of the best ones. So it would be based on the research that was done. So we didn't, this isn't based on ASD research.
And through the President to our Vice President, we actually have a group led by elementary ed that's going to report out as we're moving through policy and instruction in regard to homework. So there's a larger group of folks in ASD that are committed to reading research, understanding what's effective. And it doesn't, nowhere does it say homework is not appropriate. It just is in the right place at the right time and the right amount, and that kids can do it. So we're going to, they're in the middle of this study because we know kids don't come to the table the same. So we want to ensure that our kids are all supported through the work that we ask them to do. But we can put that, I'm not sure, I can probably find out when the completion and the recommendations will come forward to me, and then we could report them to the board at the same time. But that is having us a very tenuous look at our homework policy before we put it towards the board. There's quite a few people working on that.
And I'm glad to hear that because I know you know that I've mentioned homework before and maybe that, you know, in some cases it's been too much or, I mean, yeah, I'm very excited about that, so I look forward to hear what you guys have come up with.
I'm going to jump in here. I'll do a segue first to what Ms. Marsette says. In this homework, this group that's looking at homework then, I'm hoping they're going to look at some of those same studies in this meta-analysis about best practices. So when they come out with recommendations, it's not just do this amount of homework, but the specific type that's going to make the impact in our academic achievement and in those relationships between the school and community. Couple of comments, too. I was actually in an APT meeting at Alaska Native Cultural Charter School and was very impressed. There was a couple of things that added on that I think made it such a successful experience for the parents and myself, was that the children were in a supervised activity at the same time. They weren't with the parents, so the parents could really focus on learning the activity that they would then replicate at home. They were also given the materials that they could go home and do. They didn't have to go buy something or make something. They did have to cut something out, but that was the maximum. They would need a pair of scissors. And then they also offered food. So it was a very warm, welcoming environment in which we were there, and it was a great interaction. And I left there thinking, wow, this should be done in all schools or at least considered in many schools because it was a very impactful parent-teacher conference and a completely different paradigm. The other thing is, as we look at this family engagement, and I hear about these wonderful examples in schools, and it's part of this larger discussion, and what Mr. Donnelly brought up, is I'm looking for where this becomes more comprehensive, where this becomes the norm as opposed to the exception in these various schools. Because we're seeing that these things have a direct impact, and we need to find ways to engage differently. And obviously, I became a big believer in listening to the parents at this national conference who were not engaged in any way, shape, or form with their schools, and then became some of the most engaged. And not your, the ones who you would believe necessarily come to the table first. There was a woman, a Mongolian woman, whose English was extremely limited, but she made that effort to become engaged, and in the process, her English language abilities soared, and then she became the parent leader and eventually the president of the PTA for that school. So it was a marvelous engagement opportunity for our underrepresented student populations. Last but not least, what did I say? Oh, Screenagers. I saw that, and I was distressed that I had a conflict and couldn't go to that. And I'm wondering if the administration would consider maybe having a viewing of that in this very board meeting and inviting anybody in the public to come to it. I don't know the copyright issues with the use of that film, but it would be nice to allow that unless you're looking at it as a way to bring the parents and the teachers to set up that relationship. So, you know, it goes both ways. But I would love to have an opportunity to watch that at some point, the Screenagers film. Thank you very much. Mr. Donnelly.
Would you please send me a copy of your PowerPoint presentation tonight? I'd really appreciate it. And I was wondering if you could say some more about the community cafe format at Golden View. Was it an evening? Was it an afternoon?
We got reports from the school about that, so I haven't been to one, so it would be really good to talk to the principal at that school. But I think that they did it in the evening with the parents so that they could come in and provide more feedback, and we can get more information on the structure of that and specifically what it looked like, the components that made it successful.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I attended a family night at Wendler Middle School that was really well structured, really well put on. It had breakout classes for parents about communicating with your kids and assisting with homework. It was really well done, and I really want to congratulate the leadership at Wendler for doing that, too.
Ms. Marsette?
So, hopefully I can remember my first one. Oh, one of the things I'd like to see that I know that we're doing with our EEL parents is having them come to the ed center, and the parents work with their child on math. And then we have like a daycare for younger siblings here, and we have food. And that seems to have been very successful with these parents. When, I just happened to stop by because there were cars out there and I'm nosy, and so I stopped by to see what they were doing. And it seems to be something that's working very well for them, and I'd like to see that. And I know it's a grant program, but I'd like to see something like that offered maybe more to our parents where we're offering, you know, daycare for the younger ones, food, and they can come here and work with their child on their math or whatever so that they have a better understanding of reading or, you know, whatever. And then on the cafe thing, that is, actually, I went through training with Greater Alaska Schools on that. So they actually offer that, and probably, I would guess, did training at Golden View, and they took that up. It is a very, I'll just throw that out there. But it's very successful, and it does bring everybody together and kind of keeps you focused on what your priorities are and what you're trying to accomplish for that evening. So it is a great project. If you don't get it from them, I know Deana can get it for you. Deana Mitchell.
Other questions from board members? And for note, that PowerPoint is uploading right now to Board Docs. I have to renew.
So, Madam President, if, I don't know if you've got your notes somewhere. I greatly appreciate more information about those two programs you mentioned in your report, I think, when you got back from that national conference.
Oh, I can shower you with information. I was trying to be conservative in what I was.
Well, that one really perked my interest.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Bishop, pro forma is next topic.
Madam President, we have our long way to perform a budget, or outlook, if you will, and our CFO, Jim Anderson, and Andy Ratliff will be presenting. This should be also posted already under the Work Session.
Good evening. I'm Jim Anderson, the CFO, and Andy Ratliff, the Senior Director of OMB, and will be providing the pro forma in the next 30 minutes. So the purpose of the pro forma can be misunderstood. It's not the vision of instruction and curricular programs. It's not the absolute baseline upon which a budget is built. The Destination 2020 goals and objectives and the information that comes out of Dr. Bishop and Board Guidance and on the instruction side actually does that. Simply put, the pro forma is built to do a projected budget gap and, of course, projection on anticipated revenues for the following year. So as we get through this, you will see what we believe our projected budget gap will be after spending the last three weeks trying to assess. And obviously, at the end, we'll have more than enough time for questions. Slide. So this slide, Dr. Bishop has briefed multiple times. It shows the six steps of the State Foundation Formula, and we'll be going into detail on this in follow-on slides. Slide. I did want to start, when we start talking about projected budget gap, I just wanted to put, and I think it was, Member Marsette asked for this a couple of weeks ago, to look at the BSA gap over time. And you can see that for quite some time, we've had a BSA gap, for years. In the period FY12 through FY15, the state provided additional funding outside of the formula in order to make sure they didn't have to permanently change the BSA because one-time money can be used one time, but if they changed the BSA in '12, then they didn't know at that time that they would have enough money to continue doing that. So you can see that really since FY15, the gap has only gotten larger, and in fact, that was the highest point per student that the state has funded district. Slide. So this is the first step of the Foundation Formula. We take the average daily membership, that's the count of the first 20 school days in the month of October. It is different from enrollment, which is done every month, and we had some confusion on the difference between enrollment and membership. So during this brief, we will only talk average daily membership or adjusted average daily membership in order to keep it clean. So you multiply times the school size adjustment. And actually, when Andy runs this, he goes through every single school independently. So this number, the 1.10999, that's an average pulled together from across the district. So you get about 11% added to the initial ADM. Next step. Then you do the district cost factor. I think everyone is aware that we are ground zero for the rest of the state. 0% maybe was the wrong.
1%.
1% is, the number 1 would have been the right, probably a better number to put than 0% because Dr. Bishop.
Not by 0, by 1. We're a multiplier of 1.
So we get no benefit for being anchorage in that regard. So on the next page, you'll see the cost factors or the adjustments for special needs factor. So for bilingual education, special ed, gifted and talented, and vocational education, it's not a block grant. It's a factor that spreads across the district's total funding. And multiple queries to the state have confirmed that there is no clean breakout of that 20%. There's none of it intended for any specific one, just knowing that those programs cost more than others for core education, so they wanted to provide that extra 20%. And I believe that, Remember, Donnelly was in Juno when that was formed. So you get the 20%, and it obviously jumps it up at the bottom. Next slide. Then we have the special needs. The special needs, or I'm sorry, the CTE factor. The first one, it said vocational education. This one is specifically for CTE. And I think everyone knows CTE is, can be very expensive with sometimes eight, nine, 10 students per class. So this does help a lot. It's really a 1.5% adjustment, so it certainly doesn't overpay for our CTE classes. So if you slip one more slide to the right, make sure I'm on the right slide. Okay, that's it. I'm sorry. Okay, now the correspondence factor. Correspondence, you only get 90 cents on the dollar for correspondence students, and I think Dr. Bishop has spoke a few times in public as to, at some point, maybe this would be something we look at getting changed because it doesn't get any additional funding for students with special needs, even though they may be in a correspondence program and still receive those services from the district. So that will be a future discussion, but for the purposes of today's law, it's 90 cents on a dollar. So next slide. Next is the intensive needs factor. As everyone knows, we were short several hundred students this year. We also had more intensive needs than we anticipated by far, and they get 13 times the count for an intensive needs student. And that comes in with our total adjusted ADM, and that's what the state multiplies times the BSA to determine what our state revenue is. And obviously, there's some other steps in there. There's required local effort. They subtract out for federal impact aid and a few other things that Andy will be talking through on follow-on slides. Slide.
Could you, before you, could you speak to the stress case, please, before you go on?
Yes, ma'am. So the stress case is based on a 1% reduction in the BSA. We chose 1% solely as a metric that's easily scalable. So when you're talking to legislators or folks in Juno, when they're talking 3%, 4%, 5% reduction, potential scenarios, then we can multiply what that means to us easily. And if we take the 1% out of the BSA, that's going to trigger state and local contributions to go down as well, rather than just underfunding the portion that goes to schools. So this chart is just a walkthrough of that Foundation Formula we went through, both of what we adopted versus what our preliminary oasis was. I believe we've had a number of conversations around the changes in enrollment, and frankly, pretty low, and we overprojected what our membership would be. But in the end, after the, with the preliminary oasis and the intensive students, that district-adjusted ADM is pretty close to what the actual projection was, what you're paid on in the BSA. So the next slide should show the BSA times the district-adjusted ADM for all four columns, and then the basic need of calculation of the base student allocation times your AADM or adjusted ADM. The required local effort, this is 2.65 mils of your property values to prior years, which is down below the 40.3 million. After the reductions for the required local effort and the impact aid, we get to about $326.5 million of state revenue that's projected for next year with an additional local contribution of 208 million for a total of $535 million roughly. The other local revenue on here, going through this slide, the other one noted E-rate earnings are expected to go down. This is largely due to the endpoint hardware that the board authorized a few years prior. We installed it, or we paid for it last year, we got reimbursed for it this year, and next year, we're turning back to the new normal of around a million. It was really just a one-year bump in the '17, '18 budget because we got approved to buy all these endpoint routers in the classrooms. It improves connection and density speeds within the schools. It improves connection and density speeds within the schools. So local revenue reduction of about 6 million. The state reduction of 540,000, that's due to a decline in enrollment and a shift from local property taxes to state based on a decline in the assessed valuation from 2016 to 2017. So as that state revenue, as the local revenue goes up due to, or the state revenue went up because we had lower property values, that's just kind of a shifting who pays for it. So you'll see property tax go down, the state goes up, and they both are kind of offset by enrollment declines. And then we're anticipating a little bit more in Medicaid reimbursement as we get a little better trend data and more consistent payments from the state on that. I think we can project upwards a little on that. So overall, for our enrollment, we're projecting about a $6.1 million decline in enrollment from what our adopted budget was in '17, '18 to the current, or for the projected for next year. And none of that includes any fund balance usage. We haven't assumed any of that, just as a, here's the dollars we're getting in versus the dollars that we may have to pay out for that scenario. So our expenditure projections are based on our current staffing levels, adjusted for enrollment, and then a couple other contract changes with regard to custodians. But as we lose approximately 700 students, or 800 students, over the course of a few years, we can anticipate our staffing going down, particularly for teachers, based on our, just based on PTR form, you know, the same number of kids in a classroom, the number of teachers goes down. We took about 25 teachers out for that. And then we'll go through inflation costs by state function, and then the other kind of outstanding salary and benefit items with regards to substitutes bonuses, attrition. So we'll go through those in a little more detail once we get to them. So this is the FTE by state function as we go through there. You'll notice in instruction, that's where we pulled out the 25 teachers, and then we added some in the operations and maintenance. And this is based on the cleaning model that was approved in the custodia contract, where we're hiring a few more part-time folks that aren't benefit-eligible to do the daily cleaning. So this is a change in the model. We save money on medical, but we had to increase the FTE a little bit for that. Go back.
Ms. Marsette.
Just something that I think would be helpful on this graph here. If we could put the decrease of students on here, so people could see it at the same time as we're looking at the decrease in services or whatever.
Thank you.
Maybe as a asterisk, you mean, like at the bottom? I'll add one there.
Yeah, right where you say personnel changes in instruction category, put in parentheses, as a result of decrease in...
Well, I think it helps when you have the decrease for every year to see how that decrease has affected the other, you know...
And we'll figure it out, because these are, we want to keep it official with the chart of accounts, so it relates back to, these are all the chart of accounts and their titles. So we certainly can put it in the top. I recommend not changing that, because...
Putting just another "well..."
Because we will want people to look at this and look this up and see that it's replicated elsewhere.
Okay.
But I like the idea, just like we did on the personnel changes at the bottom, was due to a contract change. We should also state that the personnel changes for certified is a direct result as well. That's a good point.
So this just shows those FTE. That's extrapolated for the relative, the budget amount for those. For instruction, we only have it going up 0.47%, but again, that's because, mostly because we took out 25 FTE out of there, about 2.5 million. And then, so the other one to kind of note is the school administration. A few of these categories is when we adopted the budget in 2017, '18, we didn't have contracts in place yet, so you'll see it for school administration, which is particularly school principals or entirely school principals. So as we're putting that in, it's not a 2.5% increase. That accounts for two years of their contract. Since they didn't have one in place in '17, '18, we didn't have those costs in the adopted budget. Rather, we made that adjustment after we approved the contract in the spring or fall. So you'll see that as a larger increase. And then operations and maintenance is the same thing. We didn't have contracts for our custodians and maintenance workers. The other thing to note here on the other capital outlay, the increase in substitutes and personal leave. When we originally built this, this was predicated on a tentative agreement with the teachers' union. So you see those GOs going up, those are the leave days that were included in the teacher's contract. We didn't have time to go back and make those adjustments yet, although when we look at the total gap, we don't expect that to be significantly different as we do anticipate some sort of expenditure for those items. The contract spending settlement, we took that line out. Instead, we're going to try to get more accurate on where those things go, whether it's into utilities, medical, other areas, try to get those based in the categories that we want them in, rather than having a pool sitting out there. So? Can we go back to slide? Can we go back one, please? The other things to note would be the medical insurance, and that's still going up. And some of that is due to, even though a lot of the contribution rates will be the same as it is this year, it wasn't accounted for in the '17, '18 adopted version. So you do see it going up, but it's because of that year lag, and we didn't have a contract in place. Here's the next slide, please. Previous slide. So the budget gap that we're looking at for this year in the general fund is about $9.6 million. It's largely due to the increase, or the decrease in revenue. I think we've managed to control the cost pretty well for the other areas. We do have an increase in the contracted services. That's mostly utility costs that are increasing from the adopted budget to what we expect to pay out for next year.
Can you speak to the big insurance increase?
Most of that would be in our liability claims. We make an estimate based on, you know, we're self-insured, so the amount of claims we could pay out can vary very widely between any years. So we see what claims we have active, and we think we may have a couple other, a couple hundred thousand dollars of additional claims to pay out next year. But that could really go either way. We do want to kind of err on the side of caution when we do these, though.
Thank you.
Slide. The transportation fund, it's largely based on the revenues tied to state funding as well, it's tied to the number of students. And then the expenditures, of course, we'll go through all this, but it's, the largest thing will be the transportation contract, and then it's another funding issue within here as well. So if we go to the next slide, this, the transportation budget gap, we don't have any fund balance included in there. As you can see, the transportation revenue from the state is also going down. That's tied to ADM as well. So we're going to have a loss of revenue of about $3 million or so in transportation fund. 2.3 of that is what we had supplemented for '17, '18. And then the contracted, or the services on it were estimating minimal increases based on salaries and benefits. That contract's not been settled yet either. And the contracted services includes the minimal increase for the cost of the CPI adjustments to the reliant contract, but also that's where we put the line item to repay the lease that's coming forward for the 16 bus.
Right, $250,000 a year, roughly.
So the $250,000 a year makes up a lot of that. So that's about $3.5 million of a budget gap for our transportation fund. Our total budget gap's a little over $13 million at this point, is what we're estimating. And as we get more detailed projections, we'll include those while we're building the budget and brief those once we have a more detailed budget, or an actual budget built.
Last one slide. So the budget development timeline is going to be very similar to last year. Hopefully, the states are on our end as opposed to the end of June. But so, we're still receiving the budget item details from the departments and schools. We should have all of those this week. Then we'll start pulling together everyone's proposed budgets and do a reassessment of what might be a slightly higher budget gap, and then we'll start doing the process of bringing it down. The community response survey will be complete tomorrow, or as soon as I can get with Dr. Bishop to get approval, and then we'll have it out. And much like last year, I think last year we had almost 7,000 people, so it was pretty responsive last year doing it this time of year instead of in the August, September, October time of years past. So I suspect that will go well. In January, it'll be all hands on deck. We'll have some principals assisting us, obviously the leadership taking input from the community and the school board as we pull it together. And by city charter, we have to get the budget to them by the first Monday in March, and they need to approve it, or it effectively passes anyway by the end of March. So really, we'll have towards the end of January through February to work with the school board on making modifications, and we plan on giving you options, because one size doesn't fit all. So we will come up with a proposed budget as quickly as possible, and obviously, $13.5 million potential deficit. None of the choices are going to be great, but choices will be made, and then we will try to get feedback from you and see what's the right direction as we pull this together for next year. I think that's the last slide, barring any questions.
Board members. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Madam President, those were the three items on the work session, and at 5:30, we do have focus on staff and students, so...
So we'll take a little break for 10 minutes, and then please, I'll be back here. We'll start promptly at 5:30. Thank you. We'll start promptly at 5:30. Thank you.
My name is Deana Bishop, the Superintendent of ASD. And I always like to do a briefing. So those of you that come to board meetings all the time, you're going to just hear why we do focus on staff and students. And those that are new, it's really for you so that you understand why this time has taken to celebrate your success. A couple of years ago, during a retreat, the board had a discussion about ASD and what really makes us great. And the resolution of that long discussion was really the people, whether it be students, staff, our community members, volunteers, employees. It really didn't matter. It was definitely the people in the system who make the system so wonderful, a school system for public education, for our students of Anchorage. And with that, they have reserved 30 minutes every board meeting to share successes of the people of ASD. And this evening, we have four items to share with you. So to begin, and they're all getting ready over here, I first like Amanda Hoffman to come forward. And the Title VI Indian Education's Cultural Enrichment Specialist, right here, Amanda Hoffman, is here to share logos that were developed for native leadership at seven of our schools. She's going to take over. I'm going to hand her this mic, and then they have a presentation from the students. So I'll turn this over to you. You have to hold.
Thank you. Thank you, President Agastya Easler, School Board and Superintendent. Dr. Bishop, for this opportunity, my name is Amanda Hoffman. I'm the Culture Enrichment Specialist for Title VI Indian Education. I grew up in Bethel, Alaska. My family's from Holy Cross in Aniak, Alaska. I'm from the Koyakon and Degaton Athabaskan tribes of Alaska. I've been with the school district for two years. I was the Project P Coordinator for the first eight months when I started with ASD, working with the Title VI Anchorage School District High School students getting ahead or catching up on high school credits. Last year, I was a community counselor at East High School. This past May, I started as the Culture Enrichment Specialist. When I started working at East High School, I noticed our students were part of something different from our other schools. Thinking back from my previous year working as a Project P Coordinator, what made East different from our other schools was that they have a native leadership club, a presence of their own for our Title VI students within the schools. This is the Title VI Indian Education logo, a symbol that identifies who we are here in the district. Seeing the positive students' impact of East Native leadership, it was decided to ask each school and middle school with community counselors to indigenize or create a logo to represent the Title VI students at each school. So far, seven logos have been completed. Students and staff from the schools are here to model and tell you about the new logo. So first, we have Melanie Dementif, a senior from East High School.
Hello, my name is Melanie Dementif. I'm Yupik and Athabaskan. I'm here to learn about East High. Hello, my name is Melanie Dementif. I'm Yupik and Athabaskan, and I am a senior at East High School. So this right here is our school's logo. The background is represented by a traditional Inupiaq drum. And above and below the drum are two phrases that represent the two cultures of Alaska, which would be, or two of some of the cultures of Alaska, which would be Yupik and Inupiaq. The above phrase, which is the Yupik phrase, reads "Ilitnauvik within east," which translates to "a place to learn within east." And then the phrase below is the Inupiaq phrase, which reads "Enunavnikut Inupiarovluta," which translates to "we live this way because we are the real people." And the image in between, EWE, is the acronym for Ilitnauvik within east. And then above that is an image that represents the southeastern cultures of Alaska.
Will you show your shirt?
Thank you, Melanie. Now we have Avery, senior from West High School.
Hi, well, I'm Avery Wells. I'm a senior at Diamond High. And our shirt has "Jawat," which means strength in Athabaskan. And my family's from Khotseu and Metlekalau, which are completely opposite sides of Alaska.
I like it. Show your shirt, it's the blinks there.
Thank you. And now we have Kristiana, a senior from Bartlett High School. Oh, junior.
Hello, I'm Kristiana, and this is Bartlett's logo. And above, we have all of the cultures, which would be the St. Lawrence, the Yupik, and the Inupiaq. Then we have the Unanga and Alutik. And then we have the Haida, Klinkit, and Iyak. And well, next to it is the Athabaskan and then the Yupik. And below is a lot within Bartlett. A lot means family. And to pull it all together, it's basically like the cultures surrounding Bartlett, and it's pulling us all together.
Thank you. And now we have Rosie, a seventh grader from Windler Middle School.
Hello, my name is Yishnuzbat Rose, unique yellow horse. Hello, my name is Yishnuzbat Rose, unique yellow horse. I just said my clans, and I am Navajo. The stock clan, the one who walks around you, the water's edge people, the charming house people. I am from Crystal, New Mexico. And I just, I want to thank you all for letting me have this opportunity to show my logo and everything. And when I first started this, I started with the Windler Title VI students. And I did it all, found the font. And then when I noticed, I forgot the S in "students." I erased it all and did it again. And then I did the ram next. And once I finished the ram, it didn't look tough enough, so that's when I added the nose. And then I did the dance fans and the drum. And once I looked back at it, I was like, the horns need something. And then so I added the salmon and the water. And yeah.
Good job. Thank you, Rosie. And now we have Kelsey, our community counselor from Clark Middle School.
Hey there, I'm Kelsey Atkinson. I'm the community counselor over at Clark, and I'm representing my student Heather Umatuk, who is from Point Hope. And what we did at our school is that we held a art competition. And all the students in the Native Leadership Academy came up with their own designs, and then they got to vote on the winner. And this was the winner. And our falcon is our mascot and a dream catcher. So I'm really proud of her.
Thank you. And now we have Thea, one of our community counselors from Roaming.
Hello, my name is Thea Cuni. I'm the Title VI community counselor at Roaming. Our design came up with two students. This is Bobby Aluska. He is Alutik and Supiak, so he started with the drum. And then we had another collaborative, because I didn't want to leave one out, is Lexi Gardner. And she came up with the dream catcher in the middle. And we kind of had a difficult time with the Trojan to make it, transform it. So this is what we came up with. So it's kind of like a shield to me. That's what it represents, and that has strength and courage. And this is Bobby Aluska, and he's an eighth grader.
Thank you. Now we have Michael Drew. He's a community counselor from Begich Middle School.
Hi, guys. My name is Michael Drew. I'm from Holy Cross, Alaska, on the Yukon River. I'm over at Begich Middle School. Been inside the school district for about 18 years now. And we have a design that has a dream catcher that's on there. And the eyes are yellow, and it's so cool. So the snow leopard song coming through the dream catcher, and it just looks awesome with the eagle feather down at the bottom. So, all right, go baby.
Thank you. So those were our seven logos that we've created so far. Will Title VI staff and principals from the schools please join me up front with the students so we could recognize you for your hard work, support, and dedication to the students?
Terrific presentations. Thank you. At this time, if the students are in the audience, if they could come forward. Suzie McRae, Patty Maya, Gareth Nelson, Calvin Rogers, Josh Sampson, Michael Sherbic, and Noah Williams. And I'm not sure if there are teachers here, Lisa, or Lisa Boland here? No? Okay, well, come on up. There are principals. Oh, there she is. Come on up, Robin. All right, so we have some students here who saved the day. Come on up. There you go. So today, we're recognizing Lisa's heroes. These students did an amazing job taking care of their teacher, who was hurt in an accident while they were out in the community. While walking toward the bus to get back to school, the teacher, Lisa Boland, fell and was severely injured. One of the students took it upon himself to call 911. Students stayed with the teacher until another ACE ACT staff arrived. Once the students knew she was in safe hands, they got to their bus to head back to school. These folks are heroes. Please join the school board and administration in recognizing our students for their fast actions and taking care of their teacher in a time of need. All right, would any of you like to talk about this publicly with a microphone? Do you like microphones? No? No? Well, this is amazing, so thank you very much. And it was actually a very severe injury, correct? And maybe you would like to, and that's why she's not here. She's still out of work, but she was in good hands. Would you like to talk about it?
From what I understand, she fell and just hit the right place on her knee and cracked it into two different pieces. And so because of that, it was super severe, and she could not even move. So at that time, they took it upon themselves to go ahead and call 911 and did all of the right things. What we teach at the ASAC program is to be more independent and learning to help others, and it's exactly what they did.
So they get A pluses on all reports then, for sure. They deserve it. So are you sure no one wants to say anything? No? All right, well, then we're going to take a photograph for our website, if that's all right. Squish together. And congratulations once again. At this time, will the Diamond High volleyball team please come forward? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, Diamond High School is the 2017 FRA volleyball state champions. And this was a three-peat for Diamond High School. And I happen to have a daughter in college playing volleyball, and your first time you went around, you whooped them. She was from Wasilla, so you are well-deserving. So this, again, is a three-peat, never losing a match at the state tournament. They ended the year with a 20-3 record. Diamond went 13-1 in Cook Inlet Conference regular season matches in a very competitive league. They also took first in the Diamond Service Volleyball Tournament, which included 20 teams from around the state. Three all-state players are from the Diamond team. Maya Carley, is that Carl?
She's at basketball.
Oh, she's at basketball. Great. Is it Honi Johnson?
She's at orchestra.
At orchestra. You see how wonderful these kids are. And Alyssa Pilly?
Basketball.
Basketball. Wow, all right. Coach Kim Lowers is here. And she said, "This team came to practice every day with a purpose and was one of the most focused teams that I'd ever had. Everyone on our roster had huge roles that helped us compete or complete our season with a sense of accomplishment, both on and off the court. These young women continued to work hard, make adjustments, stay positive, and stay together until the very end. One team, one dream, Diamond High School." Nice job. All right. The team had many motivating quotes for this season, but was one of the favorites was, "Practice like you have never won and play like you have never lost." Congratulations, Diamond High, 2017 three-peters, state champions, right here. Congrats. And a winning tradition, and their principal is...